The act is available at this meeting. Madam Clerk, can you please take a roll?
Augustine Schulte.
Here.
Barr.
Here.
Freshour. Hemer.
Here.
Jablonsky.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schilling. Council President Augustine Schulte, the roll has been called.
Thank you. We have three items on our agenda tonight, and we want to be sure that we have adequate time to be able to discuss all of these. So our first one will be the emergency medical services for Duncan Rural Fire District and Columbus Rural Fire District. And I'd like to try for us to set a goal to see if we can be finished with our discussion by 6:30 if possible, or at least to be finishing it so we have enough time to get to the other items on this agenda for tonight. I'm going to pass this over to the mayor, so he can give a, kind of bring us up to speed on where things are and what we are discussing this evening.
Thank you, Council President. Council members, what I'd like to do is just bring everybody up to speed, so everybody's on the same page as we move forward with this evening's discussion. As you all know from emails I have sent you and discussions we have had, we have been in an ongoing discussion with members of Duncan Rural and Columbus Rural and the county since August of last summer, moving back and forth trying to come to a conclusion. Last, on, I believe it was May, I didn't write the date down, May 23rd, I attended the county supervisors' meeting and presented the city's case. And I wanted to just present that to all of you, so you know exactly what's been put forward, after which then we'll let Fire Chief Gray come forward with the information that he will have, and then the meeting will be open for Council President Schulte to move forward with things. This again is what I had presented two weeks ago to the county supervisors. I'm here today to address the EMS services that the city of Columbus provides to Columbus Rural and Duncan Rural. This is a service that the city has provided for as long as anyone can remember without any form of compensation or an agreement in place. We started having this conversation in August 2022, looking to come together on some form of agreement. The city can no longer continue with these services without an agreement in place. What is driving this? The continued growth of Columbus, coupled with the increase in calls to Columbus Rural and Duncan Rural. Both Columbus Rural and Duncan Rural account for approximately 14% of all of Columbus Fire Department calls. We cannot adequately serve the citizens of Columbus and Columbus Rural and Duncan Rural with current staffing. Overlapping calls and the distance to serve these calls can leave us vulnerable to no staffing left at our house. We owe it to the Columbus citizens to not take a chance on being vulnerable. The city will continue to grow its staff, but at the rate to serve the needs of the city. And all those receiving service must pay their fair share. To adequately serve all the citizens of Columbus, along with Columbus Rural and Duncan Rural, the staffing of another ambulance is required. Ambulance staffing requires six people, two per shift for three shifts. The staffing comes at a cost of approximately $600,000. The county, Columbus Rural and Duncan Rural, have provided an offer to enter into a one-year agreement for $300,000 to continue service as is. A one-year agreement is not sustainable. The city has maintained that $600,000 is the solution and will not entertain an offer for less for a short period of time. An agreement needs to be in perpetuity. The city would be providing the apparatus and the equipment necessary to provide these services. This is an approximate cost of $500,000. It should also be pointed out that the services provided are advanced life support, ALS. This level of service is provided by paramedics and allows for additional life-saving measures above and beyond basic life support. Again, remember, this was given to the county supervisors. I am not here to set your levy, but we have outlined at our last meeting with the working group, if the county is willing to make up the additional $300,000 required for the city to continue to provide this life-saving service, it would require a levy of .019 per $100 of valuation for both fire districts. If the county chose to fund the entire service, it would require a levy of .038 per $100 of valuation. Either/or, the city is asking the county and/or Columbus Rural and Duncan Rural to come together with the necessary $600,000 funding. If the county is not willing to do this, we are asking that the issue of providing this service at the cost required be put to a vote of the citizens in the affected areas, and allow the city to assist with the language of this ballot. The city does not bring this to you lightly. We believe that we are presenting what is in the best interest of the Columbus taxpayers. The city will not and cannot continue the service without an agreement in place. So that was our presentation to the county supervisors. At the end of the county supervisors' meeting, they indicated that they were held firm on their $300,000 offer, and we informed them that obviously anything that needed to be done in that regard, or any regard, had to come back to a council discussion. That is where we are here today. With that, Council President, I'll turn it back to you, which I believe would be pertinent to ask Fire Chief Gray to come forward.
Thank you. Fire Chief, Chief, would you please come up and provide what you need to provide for us, please?
Thank you. Good evening. So I wanted to put together this presentation to go over a lot of what the mayor's already discussed, but where we've been and how we got to where we are today. So a little bit of background, the mayor touched on a lot of this, but one thing that's important to note here is attempts to locate any sort of signed agreement between any of the localities or jurisdictions have been unsuccessful. Our overall call volume has increased 14.58% since 2018, and our fire calls have seen an 80% increase since that same time, making it hard to sacrifice the fire staffing for EMS staffing. Columbus Rural makes up 10.47 of our calls, 61, almost 62% of those are EMS in nature, and Duncan Rural makes up 2% of our calls, and almost 81% of those are EMS in nature. So the majority of the time, we're going out there for EMS. We are currently under contract with Columbus Rural Fire District and required to respond to fire calls. The language here is although the municipality at its discretion may provide emergency medical services in response to locations within the district and outside the municipality's corporate limits, this agreement in no way includes emergency medical services, nor does it bind the municipality or the municipality's fire department to do so. Additionally, we have an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, with Duncan through the Mid-Nebraska Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association to provide mutual aid. But one thing that explicitly states is it is mutually understood and agreed that this agreement does not relieve either party from the necessity and obligation of providing adequate fire and EMS protection within its own jurisdiction. So those MOUs and mutual aid are for when your system's overwhelmed, you call for resources to assist, everyone uses it, including us. Why this is a big deal is according to Nebraska State Legislature, as we've outlined before, this is not an essential service. It does give us the ability to impose a levy at our own will, but it's not required. We recognize that EMS has, the impact that EMS has on our community, and although not essential by state statute, we all agree that it truly is an essential service. As a department of the city, we are funded by the taxes collected from city residents, therefore responsible to them to be fiscally responsible with their money. As we currently see, our citizens are paying to provide services to areas outside of city limits that do not pay their share. The city has maintained that the solution to staffing this problem, or to solving this problem is to staff an additional ambulance, which, as the mayor mentioned, requires six additional personnel, two per shift across the three shifts. Having that staffed would better allow for timely responses within the rural districts and help eliminate delayed response times for overlapping calls. So currently, we have six personnel assigned to each shift. More often than not, we're running with five to allow for a time off. So out of those five people, three are going to be assigned to an engine, two are going to be assigned to an ambulance. So it's very difficult to switch personnel back and forth between the two. And then, of course, you have myself and Chief Jones working Monday through Friday and rotating on call days as well. This is just a couple charts I put together just visual, but since 2018, we've had that 14.5% increase in calls. And then even more astounding is our overlapping calls. Our average increase of overlapping calls is 13% annually, and it's been on a steady increase, as you can see there. This is just the timeline to show where we started back in August of 2022, when we met with Tara, myself, and Kim Kopnawski, all the way through all of our meetings, different discussions, to where we sit tonight. So this has been a pretty long-lasting issue. Members of the work group, as you can see, everyone was represented through all of this. Couple of things that we felt need, I felt needed to be addressed that came up in our discussions with the county was billing for service. We absolutely bill for our service. We bill their insurance primarily, their self-insured, self-pay will bill them. Not only is that a way to reduce the burden on our taxpayers, but that's the industry standard, the norm. So funds received by billing are not enough to cover actual costs of providing the service. In FY '22, our total net payments from billing was 465, just a little over 465,000. This amount doesn't cover the cost and benefits for five firefighter paramedics. Our net expenditures for FY '22, less the capital items, was $720,960. We also must consider the cost of equipment, medications, apparatus, apparatus and equipment maintenance, training, and general disposables. We lose money on EMS, but understand it's the cost of doing business, but we cannot afford to continue to spend city taxpayers' funds to provide service outside of the city. Columbus Rural supplying fire equipment. Columbus Rural does own the following apparatus there, and it helps, but these are not EMS or rescue apparatus, these are fire apparatus. They have, can you turn that down, please? They have ordered a new pumper that should be here shortly that will be used by the city for the next 10 years in accordance to the contract. It is beneficial to have access to their apparatus, however, by stating Columbus Rural has been instrumental, that's in quotes, in providing equipment, as stated at the board of supervisors' meeting, is not entirely accurate. The provided apparatus are not EMS apparatus, and use is covered in the contract. Even with Columbus Rural supplying those apparatus, the city provides them turnout gear, training, radios, communications equipment, SCBA's, tools and equipment to be placed on their apparatus, hoses, nozzles, water appliances. You'll see there with the new engine, they are purchasing the large diameter hose, and then also insurance coverages, which are reimbursed through them. These items come at a significant cost to the city. Should also be noted that the overwhelming majority of times Columbus Rural apparatus are utilized, they are being utilized by city personnel. MFO. MFO has been a hot topic since getting here last March. We did extensive research last year into whether or not an MFO would be possible within the city. After going round and round with the state treasurer's office, it was determined that Platte County and the city of Columbus would not be eligible to participate unless all of the rural fire districts in Platte County and the city were willing to do so. Emails, phone calls, text messages were sent to all departments, and although some interest was generated, there were several departments who did not answer or not interested in joining, therefore making it impossible to work. The attorney representing Columbus Rural and Duncan Rural was correct in his statements that MFOs are based on population, which is exactly why we cannot make it work. Everyone has to be involved in order to do so. You can be rest assured that all the necessary research was completed to ensure there was no way to make this work. Another thing that was brought up is a countywide levy. The city is not proposing a countywide levy to fund EMS to the affected rural districts. The numbers provided, as the mayor stated, the .019 and .038 were only for Columbus and Duncan Rural districts. We also agree with the county that the countywide levy to fund EMS within these districts would not be fair to the residents of other districts, who do not use CFD as their primary EMS response agency. It should be noted that in FY '22, the city's EMS levy was 0.3815 per $100 of valuation. We're simply asking for the same from the affected districts. Where do we stand? The city has held firm and believes that the only solution to this is the staffing of a second ambulance. In order to staff that second ambulance, the city is requesting an agreement in perpetuity to cover the cost of salaries and benefits for six additional firefighter paramedics. In 2023, that cost is approximately $600,000. The rural districts have countered with a two-year conditional agreement of $300,000 per year. The city recognizes and appreciates the willingness of the rural districts to fund half of the requested amount, but firmly believes that this is not a sustainable solution. The city requested that Platte County fund the additional $300,000 to make up the difference, and we also requested them to put it to a vote, as the mayor brought to you earlier. Additionally, we want to see a long-term agreement, so the city is not faced with hiring and training new employees just to terminate them after a two-year agreement. The county has made it clear at this time that they are not willing to fund the additional $300,000. So things to consider moving forward. Council must consider the current offer from the rural districts, the two-year conditional agreement and the amount of $300,000 per year. Understand that six additional personnel are required to make this happen. If negotiations fail, which actions will the city take? And I'm sure there are more than what I have listed here, but see service outside of city limits, and if so, when? Continue to operate as we do now with no increase in staffing, counteroffer to the county, and a deadline for a final decision from Platte County. In closing, we're willing to continue to provide this life-saving service to residents and businesses outside of the city limits, but can no longer afford to do so with the financial burden being on city residents. An additional staffed ambulance is the only solution that we believe truly solves the problem. We believe that $600,000 is a reasonable ask, considering the level of service that is being offered. The burden of providing these services should not fall on the city. The responsibility of the city is to provide services to the residents and businesses that pay taxes to the city. And that is all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions from council members?
Chief, do you want to just explain a little further what the benefits of an MFO would be?
Sure. So the state sets aside millions of dollars a year to help offset costs of fire departments across the state. So what that would allow for is, and what that does is, you enter into a three-year agreement, and out of that three-year agreement, one year, all of the localities, everyone participating in the MFO would be required to charge the same levy rate. The other two years, you can make it whatever you want, but that one year, you would have to do the same levy rate. That would open us up to an additional, the MFO would get $300,000 a year from the state, and each rural district would get 10 or 15,000, 10,000 on top of that. So we wouldn't get the additional 10, but that 300,000 would be, and within that MFO, we would outline how it would be dispersed, who gets what, so forth and so on. So there is, there's some benefit to it. And like I said, we really did do a lot of digging and research. Tara wasn't, got after them too, but we just couldn't, there was no way, there was no way. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Chief? If not, then we'll open it up if there's anybody in the audience that has a comment or a question that would like to propose either to the chief or to the council. Mr., we'll start, we'll start over here, okay? Please be sure to state your name.
I'm familiar to some faces here. I was here back when you had the union matter with the volunteers and so forth. My name is Jim Egger, spelled E-G-R. Good Irish name, check, okay? And I'm from David City, Nebraska, and I am an attorney, and I was legal counsel for the Nebraska State Volunteer Firefighters Association for 45 years. I am now retired from that particular position and do a lot of work for rural fire protection districts throughout the state, the length and breadth of the state. I'll tell you what I will do, if this is okay with you, on this matter, is read to you what I read to the county board, okay? I thought that might be a fair way to handle it, like the mayor did. And then, if I may, instead of going back and sitting down and taking other comments, make a few comments on, on some things, keep things rolling along here for you. Because we know you have a busy schedule, and then you're going to get tired of listening to things, because you got a full schedule up on, at 7 o'clock. So if that's okay with you, I'll read to you what I did. I broke it down into acknowledgements, considerations, and proposals, okay? Acknowledgements. The Columbus Rural Fire Protection District and Duncan Rural Fire Protection District acknowledge that the city of Columbus has provided EMS services to them and the districts, and the districts have not paid for such services. The districts greatly appreciate the EMS services. B, districts together roughly account for, and there's a difference of opinion as to the amount on the calls on there, but somewhere between 10 and 12 and 13% on the EMS part. The city requires, the city requires an additional six paramedics to adequately staff the EMS services at a cost of $600,000. In short, staffing is the issue. We acknowledge that. Cities such as Norfolk and Hastings charge a fixed call per rate, fixed rate per call. Jose Rodriguez, the deputy Platte County attorney for Platte County Board, has done extensive research and provided the same to the county board and the districts about cost to the counties for EMS, and that should be referenced. I think if you would contact them, he's got a packet about this thick, just like you have, a packet that thick of an analysis. I have a summary of what goes on in some of these counties and the costs, and I think this would be important for you to know, because I will address that in relation to what Chief Gray says about the reasonableness for two rural districts and what's being charged, because the figures we have from some other counties is to provide service to the entire counties, okay? Keep that in mind. There does need to be an interlocal agreement reached between the districts and the city for EMS services. There's no doubt about that. There does need to be an agreement. There needs to be a reasonable and equitable method developed for EMS service charges between the districts and the city. We acknowledge that. And we acknowledge that the districts will need to follow the statutory procedures to raise their levies to cover an interlocal agreement with the city. County has said they'll cooperate with the districts to do the necessary levy increase, but not to any $600,000. Also to remember, and Chief Gray mentioned it, that you do bill for services. And remember, there's Medicare, there's the insurance premiums and the billings, and he mentioned that. And for anybody who does EMS, I don't care who you are, you make no money on it, okay? I was a volunteer firefighter and EMT in David City for 23 years, and with all my travels and being legal counsel for the Volunteer Firefighters Association, you don't make money. That's why you've got pancake feeds, and you've got the stock car races, and all this other stuff that volunteer departments do, okay? Considerations. It is important that EMS services be provided to the residents of the districts. That's important. And continue, even if, if on a conditional basis. That's important out there, because you've got in the, you've got in the, in the rural districts there, I mean, you've got like ADM and those kinds of places on there who would not be covered if all of a sudden, boom, there was no services. It is not in the fiscal best interest of the districts to rush into, into an interlocal agreement with the city until options are examined and discussed. It is important that discussions continue between the districts and the city. We shouldn't just cut off everybody and get angry and, and like that, and that's not the situation with the districts, I can assure you of that, and I can also tell that that's not the situation with the city. Options that we would think would be out there are interlocal agreement between the districts and the city, either on a per-call basis or on a set fiscal year amount, an agreement with the Columbus Community Hospital, they're talking about providing ambulance services, priority, priority medical, or a combination of all three. Those are possibilities in there, because I can, I can see from what the chief is saying, and we've, we've discussed this, you run into that type of situation where you're here, and then you get a call there, and there's delay, and if we've got a combination, maybe, there's some other avenues and options. And, and don't take any offense when I say this, because I said this at the council meeting, or at the county board meeting, the district should not be looked upon as a golden goose or as a cash cow. Yeah, they can raise the, they can raise the taxes, but they shouldn't be looked upon that as, here's, here's a place where we can get $600,000. What the district would propose is this, a two-year conditional interlocal agreement between the districts and the city, number one. The cost each fiscal year for the districts would be $300,000 each fiscal year, and the division of said amount would be agreed upon between the districts. Not 300,000 per district, but 300,000 total each fiscal year, and then they would figure out between them, because of their size and valuations, how to split the $300,000. The proposed interlocal agreement that was given by the city to the districts, there's paragraph 16 through 21, and, and they, me as a lawyer, I cannot handle those. They're, they're really highly weighted to the city, which I would understand when they're proposing it, you know? That's all part of negotiations in there, but there's some provisions in there that are, I don't think that we can deal with. I don't think I know we can't deal with. And, and the interlocal agreement should be conditional, so the districts could continue to negotiate with the city and explore if there are other options, as mentioned above, about the hospital, priority medical, the city, and so forth. And that's what I presented to the county board. In relation to, if I may, Madam Chairman, Chairperson, all these right things I'm getting, I've been doing this for 45 years, it's kind of tough to change, change my spots here. There's a good thing that happened, there's a lot of good things that happened in the unicameral this year with the budgets, and, and one of them is the MFO monies have been increased to include $8,600,000 for Mutual Finance Assistance Act. That's the MFO. So that's been raised from 4 million to 8,600,000, 8,600,000. Where they get that 60,000, I don't know, but don't ask me to try to explain that from the, from the unicameral standpoint. That's been raised to 8 million. And then the 10,000 per entity on there, and I would agree with Chief Gray, I mean, we've researched it, the Nebraska State Volunteer Firefighters Association, we were involved in the instigation of the MFO in the first place on there. We started off with 2 million, then got it up to 3 and the 4, and now with this legislature to 8. But the problem is exactly what the chief says, it's a, it's a population thing. You got to get those, you got to get those other fire departments, along with the city of Columbus, to go along with this thing, and I don't see it happening. I'm, I'm sorry, I just, unless some miracle would happen, I'm sorry, I, I don't see it happening. And, and, and other cities run into that same problem. You are, you are not unique to this with the MFO. You know, that's just the way, the way it is. There's some places that just won't go along with that. Another reason why, and we run into this in Butler County, that's my county, David City and like that, we've got a couple of communities, and they're that, they can't spend the money fast enough, okay? And they have a right to ask that they not be, have to have the same levy as everybody else for two years, two out of five years, as the chief had mentioned. And their, their problem is that they have such high land valuations there in their rural districts, they cannot get, I mean, I mean, they can't spend it fast enough. And one of the requirements is that the city involved and the rural districts have to have the same mill levy. And so if you need a particular amount for your levy on there, and the MFO says, you know, we're going to vote to not have that, we want a smaller levy, excuse my language, you just, you got screwed. I'm sorry, there's, there's no other nice way to put it. I mean, just, I mean, the city of, the city of Columbus does not have that. Of course, if you press it too much, and those rural districts are going to say, we don't have, we can't, if we raise it to that particular levy, we got excess money, we don't know what to do with it. Yes?
Oh, Mayor?
Well, I was just going to say, Mr. Egger, that, that's good information, but the city council, the committee, the whole is here to look at what the city needs to do. What you're talking about are some things that relate to the county and county ideas and options, which aren't really relevant.
No, the MFO is not the county's option.
They're not, well, and MFO is only one of the things you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I, I guess I'm, let's keep it relevant to what the city is doing.
And, and I was going to say, the chief brought up all this stuff about the apparatus on the fire, that's not relevant to what we're talking about here.
Relevant to have an ambulance?
No, he talked about and mentioned all the fire apparatus. You're here today to talk about EMS.
Yes, we are.
Not about fire.
He brought up, he brought up fire to let you know the agreement between rural Columbus and the equipment that's brought, we're not talking about that.
I would respectfully submit that that's not relevant to our discussion.
I'm sorry, if you have something else...
I'm sorry, if you have something else other to discuss about apparatus or to go on, I mean, I think we have a difference.
I wanna make some comparisons here, if I may. And they're, they're from communities around. City of Hastings, Adams County, their contract is a fixed rate of $62,500 per year, and they cover, that covers the entire county of Adams, okay? You're asking for 300, you're asking for $600,000 from two districts. Norfolk Rural Fire, they got a contract for $92,000 a year, a life contract, an additional sum of $60,000 a year for equipment. And, and that's for the entire county, not for two districts, okay? City of North Platte, $72,191.35 a year, entire county. Grand Island, they have a contract with the entire county for $225,223 through June 30th, 2023, and the next contract for July 1st to June 30th, 224 is $236,484, entire county. York, interesting situation there. They would come close. They have a contract for 2022 to 2023 of $319,000. Again, the entire county.
Okay, and so...
And what I'm pointing out is you're asking for $300,000, you're asking for $600,000 from two rural fire protection districts. And I would also point out, you don't have an interstate. York has an interstate. I don't, I think Hastings catches a little bit. North Platte has an interstate, and Grand Island has a interstate. York has tremendous amount. And so I'm just, I'm just pointing out, you've got some other areas to look at. And, you know, 460-some-thousand, I think that's what the chief said, you bring in on your billings is $465,000. So, and I would just point those things out to you. I would take any other questions that you might have.
Council members, are there any other questions you'd like to ask Mr. Egger?
And I, I think the county said they will not kick in another, other $300,000. I think I understood that correctly on there. I think, I thought you said that maybe they, they said they wouldn't go more than $300,000. I think they said no.
Yeah, they countered, they, they, at the end of their meeting, said that their offer was $300,000 for two years.
I didn't hear that. I think, I thought that...
$300,000 for two years.
I did not, I did not hear that. I think, I think they said they were not going to kick in anything.
Well, what the county said was they would allow the levies to be raised within the rural districts to cover $300,000.
Okay, that's different from the county kicking in $300,000.
It is, excuse me, I just clarified.
Okay, okay, okay.
That's like, would you clarify how serious the hospital is in starting an EMS service?
They are serious. The medical director for the ambulances from the hospital there, I've been discussing that already, we know that for a fact.
Okay, thank you. Is there any additional information that you wanted to...
I'm glad you mentioned that and clarified that, because I have that on my notes. The county board did not say they will kick in $300,000. They will raise the taxes, or will allow the districts to go up to that $300,000 and raise that levy, because it has to do with the budget thing and the 15 cents. But they will not, they will, county will not kick in any money. I made that clear, very clear, the chairman of the board, I can't think, I can't pronounce the lady's name.
That's fine. Okay, thank you, Mr. Egger, I appreciate your time. And we had another comment over here.
Good afternoon, I'm Jojo Dunn, I'm the president of the Columbus Firefighters Association. So just wanna make a few comments, I'm not gonna reiterate all the stats that the mayor and the city have provided. You've seen those, you've heard them time and time again. So, thanks for your time and energy with this process, I know these decisions are extremely difficult, especially when they concern someone's welfare. So, the statements I'm gonna include, include a little bit from fire and EMS, just because we provide both, and each call, fire or EMS, one call can affect the other service and back and forth. So, as we discuss this, and as we discerned on this decision ourselves, unfortunately, we do get caught in the middle of it a little bit. There's a few key points that we kind of came up with. Number one, as a fire and EMS department for the city of Columbus, our first priority is the protection and service of the city, population, and its property. That protection not only includes training and experience, but having adequate staffing to meet the demands of our work responsibilities. Adequate staffing is very important, it's an important aspect of what we do, considering our job's extremely dangerous and can be taxing both mentally and physically. Having enough staffing means that whenever someone's in need, we can respond promptly. Having enough staffing also helps to ensure that our response is adequate, and is enough to handle the situation in an efficient manner, so that we can get back in service for that next call that we all know's coming. More staffing means better care for everyone. Number two, call volume. As our nation has grown, the system has developed, it requires each community to pay for its own services. This includes fire and EMS. Just as the citizens of Columbus, of the city of Columbus must pay for their services, the surrounding communities must also pay for their own services. The intent of this system is that each community pays its fair share of costs associated to provide these services. The city of Columbus has footed the bill for the surrounding communities for decades. Platte County and the Columbus Rural Fire District and its department have taken advantage of Big Brother for too long. The agreements signed in the past have been heavily in favor of the community receiving the service rather than being equal and fair transaction. The city of Duncan, in fact, has paid nothing for their, for our services since we've been giving them to them. Other surrounding fire districts provide for their own fire and EMS services, or at least they pay another agency fairly to do so. Number three would be along the lines of call volume and staffing. The call volume keeps increasing. As you've all heard from the chief, these numbers are on a steady incline. This is due to a variety of reasons, aging population, city growth, et cetera, including the overwhelming growth of overlapping calls, which requires several apparatus to be out at one time. The city numbers don't lie, the volume's gonna keep increasing. With calls outside the city of Columbus now reaching nearly 15%, it's starting to burden and tax our system. On the fire side, we are only required by our agreement to send two personnel to each fire and an apparatus. However, with almost no response from the Columbus Rural Fire Department, and I mean almost no response, very little, we are forced to take our entire crew and then some to handle these fires. I mean, imagine if we sent two, our obligation, we sent two people to a fire, and there's someone trapped in that fire, and we have two people, we can't do anything, and we have to stand there and watch this. Can you imagine the mental toll that that would take on some of us? So we take as many as we can, and that's not even enough most of the time. So sending the whole crew also leaves the city mostly unprotected. Now, while we do have paid reserves, and they do their best to respond, they can't always respond, that, those are just the facts. They can't be there 100% of the time, unfortunately. So, trying to, to not delay these calls, we try to be prompt and respond in an urgent manner. On the EMS side, a lot of times, just the ambulance crew will go on these calls. But not every time, sometimes we need help. Those rural fire districts do not provide help. Now Duncan will from time to time send its fire crews to help us when they can, but the fact of the matter is, you can only count on the people that you roll out the door with. There is no guarantee that you'll get anyone else. So, even if only the ambulance crew goes and the fire company is left back, if they respond to a second call, an ambulance call, well then that delays our fire response or a third ambulance response even more. And that's happening more and more often. Number four, the mental health of our staff. So more runs per firefighter means more stress on each individual person. In our line of work, you know, we see horrible things on an almost daily basis. These traumas day in and day out do have a long-term and sometimes short-term effect on the mental health and well-being of firefighters. We do things to try and stay mentally fit that include talking to each other, physical fitness, quiet time in the evenings between calls, we do try to decompress. However, you can only do so much to try to negate these stresses. Unfortunately, suicides are among, among firefighters is one of the largest causes of death in our career field. Only cancer and heart disease are on top of those. More staff, more staff means less calls per firefighter, and less stress per firefighter as the workload is spread out among more people. So, a fair and reasonable approach to solving this problem is more staffing, we all know that. But how do we attain that? Where does that money come from? More city taxes? Platte County and the city of Duncan need to either pay their fair share for services, provided, or take care of their responsibility to provide those services for their own people. We would all love to have enough money to have more than enough staff to handle the extra calls that we're getting outside of the city proper. But unfortunately, we don't have the staff, and we've been told time and time again, we know you'd need staff, we know you need staff, we don't have the money. And I believe you don't have the money. However, the Columbus Professional Firefighters have put a lot of time and effort into try and find ways to get money. It's not our job to find money, but we've been doing what we can to help. The International Association of Firefighters has helped us, free of charge to the city, with resources such as professional grant writing, municipal financial assessments, and so on, and have caused the city nothing. We are still waiting the results of those grants, but I know on one of them, we seem to have a really good shot. So we believe the amounts that were asked from the districts are more than reasonable. That's the bare minimum to cover the staffing. That's not the training, that's not the equipment, it's not the supplies, it's not maintenance, it's just to cover staffing. I don't believe this is a cash cow request. It's the responsibility of the city tax, is it the responsibility of the city taxpayers to burden the cost of paying for these services for people who don't live within the city? Well, I guess that's your decision. We at Local 1575 support the city's proposal to begin to charge those fairly that want to use our services. And just a couple of follow-up points to what the previous gentleman said. The medical director for the ambulance service coming in Columbus, or at the hospital, they're having trouble finding staff. They keep asking us to work on our days off, and quite frankly, we're probably not going to, we do this enough. Priority Medical, they can't find staff, that's the whole reason that the hospital wants to start an ambulance service, but staffing is short. A lot of people wanna work for a 911 system, a lot of people don't wanna do ambulance transports, it's a different ballgame, it's a different skillset. Most people who get into EMS wanna do 911 calls, that's what you're trained to do. As far as Hastings, with their rural contract, they're currently trying to renegotiate their agreement because they're losing too much money. I spoke with the association president myself this weekend. So, thanks for your time, if you have any questions for me, feel free.
Any questions, council members?
All right, thank you. Council president, I was just gonna reiterate what Mr. Dunn said about the hospital, I know they've talked about starting an EMS service for the last 10 to 15 years that I can remember. I have spoke with the owner of Priority Medical, they are not interested. I've spoke with the representative for Midwest Medical, they are not interested. Which leaves us today, as we, we talked about, both counties, or both districts, excuse me, have come together and proposed $300,000. The county itself will in no way help them. So at this point, I think moving forward, we need to come up with a, an agreement to either move forward with a vote of the, the, the citizens of Columbus...
Districts, of the districts.
Of the districts.
For the districts.
Yeah.
For the districts, yes. And, and do it in a quick manner, so we can have some resolution to this. This has drug out almost a year, it's unfortunate, but we do have to, we do have to put an end to it one way or another. Those are my suggestions. Open to any other comments?
Mr. Schelling, do you...
Yes, I, I've read this whole thing, and I got to thinking, what is the value of having this available to the public? What is that value? It's not the idea of the value of it when it's needed, what about the value of it, having it available? What kind of value can you put onto that? Does anybody have any idea of what, what that value might be? When you need it, is it there? What's that value?
Priceless.
You know, I, somebody needs to put that, somebody needs to put dollar amount to that. And, and that's, that's the part that's missing. What is the value of the, of having the EMS and the fire department and everybody, departments available when they're needed? Anybody have an, I, I don't know, I have no idea. That, that was the question, I kept, I kept reading this, and I was hoping maybe I'd find something in there that would, would give me an answer to what that might be, and, and I have not, I have not seen it. So I, I'm just asking, if, if somebody can tell me what that might be.
I think you're asking a rhetorical question, Ron, but the fact of the matter, in the city of Columbus, that price is .038 cents per hundred dollars evaluation, and that is what we're asking these districts to raise, the same thing the city taxpayers raise.
Yeah, that, that's, that's exactly what, what I'm asking with those people out there, what, what that value is to them.
All right, thank you, Mr. Schelling. Mr. R, did you have any comments or...
I was just concerned, Priority isn't interested, and the hospital is not having any luck finding people. If this goes through, how are we gonna find the people? Are they out there?
I believe so. It may take some time, which... I believe they are out there. I, I do think it would take some time, which we have discussed within the work group and Tara and I, but the expectation would be, as we hire these people, that money come to us. It would not, we would not require a $600,000 payment upfront and then go out to try to, it would be, we'll go through the process, we'll bring them on, then, then you pay us to, to start with. So, I do, I, they're out there.
But that in itself lends into the need for this to be in perpetuity, so that we're not hiring somebody today so that we have to let them go in a year or two years.
Correct.
If we're gonna build that development, build that force, there's gotta be a commitment. Now, I understand all agreements have to have an out, and that's fine, but that out's not, that out doesn't work at one or two years.
Yes, sir.
I, I agree with what Councilman Hemer and Schelling say, you know, we keep talking about percentages, but what, in, in reality, we wanna cover the whole district, we just don't wanna cover the 14% that have a problem. And people sleep better knowing they got the full coverage and not just the 14%. And I, I think we're, we can't agree, so I think you're gonna have to put it in the hands of the voters, and if they don't want it, then we walk away and said we did our best shot. And so I, I just, I strongly push for some kind of a postcard ballot that says yea or nay, and then we move on.
We, we had...
I can talk this thing to death.
And we had suggested to the county that they look at a, a ballot question, we asked that we would, if we could participate in the language of that question, so they understand what's being asked. We asked that we would, if we could participate in the language of that question so they understand what's being asked. And and again, I think what you're suggesting is this committee, the whole, make an official move of that is the city's position back to the county. And I would say we do that, but it has to have a date of a county answer, not just an answer, but a county. The the, something that's gonna get it done. I mean, they can answer, but then take their time to go to a vote. And and as Councilman Heimer said, this thing needs, there there needs to be structure given to a timeline.
Thank you, Mr. Jablonsky. Mr. Roth, do you have any comments you'd like to add? You're good.
Not at this point, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Kat, you have anything?
There's a lot of thoughts in my brain right now, actually. No, not at the moment, otherwise I'm gonna sound incoherent, but.
Thank you.
I guess a couple of thoughts that I had as I listened, um, you know, when I hear staffing is the issue. But that's like, that's just like taking the top off because there's so much more that's staffing. Because once you start looking at staffing, you're looking at salaries, you're looking at all of the other things that go with staffing. Um, to just say it's staffing, I just, I think there's more to it than that. So I don't think we can just limit it to that. That's my perspective. Um, also, um, in regards to how other counties pay their, how they pay out for their services. Every county and every sister city manages their budget in a way that works best for their community. We have other communities in our county that are already paying for their services. We had a whole list of counties where the whole county is covering everything or, you know, it's all being paid and nobody pays anything. That's, if that works for them, that's great, but that's not our situation. We have to look at our budgets. We have to look at how what works best for our community as a whole and and how it works in with our budget. So I guess I always, while I'm always interested in hearing how other counties do it, um, I don't hold fast to that. And then I guess my my big thought is, um, my primary focus is, I've been elected to represent the people of this community. And I have to be conscientious of how we are spending their tax dollars and to be able to give free services outside of the county. Um, at the expense of our taxpayers. I know we've annexed things, parts um into the city with the same justification that they are using our facilities, they're using our resources. But the citizens that are in town are paying for those resources and there's a justice, there's an element of justice in that that needs to be. That we have a responsibility, that that we are upholding that justice for our citizens who are already paying for those services. So I, my my perspective is, or my opinion is, uh, that we do ask for the six hundred thousand dollars. That the county decides how they want to, uh, if they want to set up a vote, if they want to have some other way, they want to raise that money. Um, I think even if we request that six hundred thousand dollars, that doesn't mean negotiations have to stop. If you want to still look for other options to raise that money or other options of way to doing things, um, you can still do that. And where nobody's telling you that once we make that decision, you can't have to quit looking. Um, you can certainly keep looking for those things and maybe in two years we can find a way to lower that cost. But uh, this is where we are right now. We need this much money right now. And we need a date that we are gonna finalize this. And I don't know if any of the council members have a date in mind what they think would be the cutoff point. My thought is October first, that is the end of this, that particular quarter of the year and we're starting the fourth quarter of the twenty twenty-three year. So um, that would be the suggestion that I have for cutoff date. So, any other feedback? Yes, Mr. Heimer?
Yeah, I would maybe say that we need to have an answer back from the county by the end of this month. And I I think we've been back and forth enough that we could have an answer by the end of this month and maybe. If if we don't have one or they chose not to respond, we look at the the mail card ballot. I'm not sure how long the notice we need to give. Somebody can maybe help with that.
But I don't, I I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, legal or state administrator. I don't believe a ballot question is of is is in our privy. We, this is a county issue. We we're we're not privy to being able to put a ballot out to county residents for a question, which is why we'd need the county involved. I mean, is that?
Well, then maybe if we don't, sorry, Ron, if we don't have a response by the end of July, July first, then then we move to the direction. Of of notifying services ending October first.
You do have a question in the audience.
I may be wrong, I may be wrong on this, but I think on a vote on this, it has, it it doesn't go just to these two districts. It goes the entire county.
That's a, that would be a county question, sir.
That's that, that's what I think. And uh, the way the bond issues go on, I don't know. But but I think if if it goes to a vote, I don't think the county can say it's gotta go just to these two districts that are involved. It goes to the entire county, to all the rural districts.
That would be, yes, thank you. And that is the way, the county's gonna have to figure that out, how they want to handle that. But I I agree with your dates by July first. We have feedback from the county on what what they have, either they're gonna accept our offer or they're gonna find a way to. If they don't want to do it by a tax, then they can come up with another way, but that's the amount of money, I think.
And service would end October one.
And that service would end on October first, July first.
You need a second for that?
Well, you're just taking a mo, you're taking a a motion out of the, do you need that for?
I believe the committee, the whole should make a recommendation to the city council.
I think I need to have somebody else make the motion though, correct? So Troy, you want, can you make a motion for us, please?
Sure.
I move that. We ask the county for six hundred thousand dollars for EMS services for. Can I make it?
You can.
We'll go ahead.
Alright, I'll say, I'll make it. I am, well, I was just gonna have Troy repeat, please repeat after me, alright? Uh, I would move that we request six hundred thousand dollars for EMS staffing from the county. And that we need to have a response from them by October first and. July first, I'm sorry, July first. And that by October first, uh, the Columbus Fire Department will discontinue their EMS services to the Duncan Rural and Columbus Rural Districts. Do I have everything in it that I need to say?
Yes.
Yeah.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second and we need us to please vote.
Are you expecting to get, sorry, one thought. Are you expecting to get a yes or a no on if they will do a referendum by July one?
Well, I think you should include that in if they're if they're not giving us.
I think we need to amend the motion then.
Amend the motion and.
Say, add that a request of Platte County to do a, to issue a referendum to those districts. And they should say, you know, yes or no, that they're willing to do that or they're unwilling.
Alright, did you get that, Janelle?
We're just gonna have the very basic up there, but we'll get the, in the minutes, we'll have the full motion in there.
Alright, and you're good with that for the second? Alright, very good. Alright, we can go ahead and vote. Alright, and our motion passes. Thank you, council members. Thank you, everybody else who contributed uh to the discussion for trying to stay within our timeframe. We appreciate your input and staying on task here. So, motion passes. We will make that recommendation to the council. We'll move on to the second item on our agenda. Uh, recommend the approval of the discussion discretionary capital improvement project policy. And Mrs. Vasacheck, would you, would you like to speak to us about this?
Yes, I will. Anybody who wants to leave is welcome to leave.
Thank you, those of you who are present.
Well, we enjoyed having you here, so you know, stay with us, please.
At least we know we had coverage.
No.
No, I don't need to pull it up. I just, um, my. Hopefully you all had an opportunity to read over the memo. I I uh wrote it pretty comprehensively to explain why and what the benefits would be to adopting this discretionary capital improvement project policy. Obviously, you are all elected by the people of Columbus to represent their best interests. And I think for, both for staff's um benefit and for the community's benefit, it would be advantageous to have you all involved more in those discretionary projects that come up. Because that is where things get dicey, right? We don't know. Or city staff, unfortunately, and this is, this is just the way it is everywhere. Staff get very little kudos when ninety-five percent of things go correctly. And they get all the blame when five percent goes incorrectly. That is how it frequently works. And um, I actually talked to the mayor about this and we had lots of conversation about the fact that nothing at the state level changes or gets addressed without the sponsorship of an elected official and that, it makes sense. You're elected to represent the people and and a local government sort of setting where those hot topics come up is the discretionary spending. And Columbus is in a really fortunate position where we do have resources every year to do quite a bit of discretionary capital improvement because we have that sales tax and it's dedicated to capital improvement. A lot of cities do not have that um latitude or that resource. So, representation of public interests, accountability and transparency. I hope you've all recognized that over the last, you know, eighteen, twenty-four months, we have dramatically increased our communication both to you all and to the public. And I think this will be another step forward in making sure that transparency is increasing all the time. Um, allocation of resources there, um, a lot of the budget process is focused on how we're going to spend that money for discretionary capital improvement projects. The things that are a no brainer generally get put in, but it's those discretionary things that um take more effort and resources. So all of you being involved in them in the budget process is great. But if sometimes maybe things get through the budget process without a lot of discussion, maybe we need to have more discussion about them. Maybe you all need to weigh in a little bit more at budget time when we're allocating our resources to discretionary spending so that we are spending our limited resources in the most appropriate way that you all feel we should be spending them. So, and then obviously, public engagement and representation. Again, um, you are all elected to to represent the people and make sure that we're spending our finite and precious resources as wisely and efficiently as as possible. Um, I a hundred percent believe that uh our staff does that. But sometimes there's breakdowns in communications and really this policy would help the community and it would help you and it would help staff. I, as city administrator, really don't see a downside in this. You as an elected official might see that it's gonna take a little bit more time to be an an elected official. But if there are, not all discretionary capital improvement projects are going to require a lot of time. And you can elect, you can kind of work with your staff leadership member and let them know how involved you would want to be in the issue. If you want email updates, if you want to come to every single meeting, the spectrum is very wide. And you can work with that staff leadership person on how involved you would want to be. But I think it's very important that when those items come before the city council and they're ready to have discussion with in front of a a public setting in a public meeting, at a town hall, whatever it is, that an elected official is there, is in the know. Is, you know, knowledgeable about what's going on and willing to to speak up about what is going on. Um, because it's not always appropriate for staff to be that person, to speak up and to say why. It's really staff's job to be the professionals in our fields, right? The expert in our fields, do the research, uh, put the planning into effort, into motion, take the action steps, do the fact based work. But those discretionary items, we would really like you all to be more involved in. Do you have any questions for me? Those are really the highlights. Um, hopefully you had an opportunity to go through the two page policy. But I drafted it and then I took it to the entire staff leadership team and everybody is excited about the possibility of moving forward with this.
Council members, any questions or comments?
I think as Tara mentioned early on, we've had, her and I have had multiple discussions about this. It it's actually, in a nutshell, it's just a way of trying to get more involvement from all of us to show the public that we are more on board and on the same page, working toward a common end. You know, now take one example, there may be a discretionary item that's on the budget. And you know what? If there's eight people sitting up here that don't want to, and and no one wants to jump on board, I would say it's not a very important discretionary spending that year.
I agree.
Right?
I agree.
And you know, and that's, that may happen and that would be good. On the other hand, there's gonna be an item where all eight are gonna say, can I help? Can I be, you know, but what we're really after are those in between. You know, those items that, you know, Ron, you love and you want to be involved with. And then there's something over here that, ah, you can care, it's important, but you don't want to put the time and effort into it. And so it just, it it's something that we're, you know, we get together with and try to make, try to make a better, you know, try to make something better out of what we've got here.
A better process.
Yeah.
I guess my thought is, um, yeah, when I, when I read through it, I thought, oh, this is gonna be a lot of work for us. Uh, but then I also thought, oh, yeah, but look at the improvement. I mean, we're always talk, always talking about improving communication, making sure we all know what's going on. All of that's a constant thing that we're hearing among us. And I just think this is gonna, this is just another, another piece to help improve that with elected officials. Um, and community and staff and um. I just, I guess good stuff doesn't always just come easy. It requires a little bit of work sometimes.
I think this is something that we as a council should be involved with. I mean, I I, I've thought this a long time, that, you know, we do not get involved. Somebody down the street asks what's going on down there, well, I don't know, you know, but here's a chance for us to be involved. And I think it's a good idea. I'm I'm all for it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm I'm a little concerned about the amount of time and effort uh that will be involved in in this regard. Uh, you indicated maybe a little bit of time and I'm thinking maybe a lot of time.
For you, Prent, you are very detail oriented, so yes, for you, it will probably be more. And we love that about you, Prent. You really, you really do bring the detail. And but like I said, you'd, you may elect to do two projects a year. Somebody else may elect to be involved in fifteen. So you can, you have the full um decision making power on what you're involved in and to what degree you're involved in it.
How much, how much time you want to put into it?
Right.
Well, Madam President, I'd recommend to the mayor and city council that the discretionary capital improvement project policy be adopted.
Second?
One more question. So if if there's a project and none of the council members want to help sponsor it, then that goes away?
It does.
Okay, so it's gonna have to take someone to 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 drive it?
Right, as the, and it's um written out in item one point four, section one, item one point four. Establishing project priority for discretionary projects will be done by the mayor and city council after the final capital list is established. This will be done by each elected official ranking all of the discretionary capital improvement projects, how they would rank each project. Um, for example, if there are forty, they will rank those projects one to forty, one being the one they most want to be most desired, forty being the least desirable. And then we will tally those and the bottom will drop off. And then you will all pick which ones you want to be involved in and we'll have, like the mayor said, if there's one that everyone's, everyone wants to be involved in, it's gonna depend on where you ranked it. Right, if if Prent and you both want to be involved in it and so does everybody, ooh, so does everybody else. Whoever ranked it higher would be the one involved because we can't have a quorum be involved in the, any project.
So we got a max of three people, three council members?
As long as those three aren't also on a subcommittee together.
And it, you know, it's something new that can be tweaked if we find, if we find something, Prent, like you're bringing up.
We need to be involved.
Good question, though. Good question, though.
And, but, but to what level and to what?
So, I think what we.
Sometimes I feel overwhelmed, and then other, other times I'm not, at, at any rate.
Well, and I think that's what you, going into something like this, we just have to be willing to say, let's look at it and see, you know? See how it is.
I would also assume that if there was a project that nobody wanted to be involved in, whether it's, they don't understand it or don't have enough information about it, you would certainly lobby to them.
Of course, and we had that discussion during our staff leadership meeting when we talked about this, that if, so if this was in place and we're at this point next year, staff leadership's already working on their capital improvement project. If there's ones that they think might, people don't know enough about, people, you know, might be on the line between yeses and nos, they could start contacting council members that they think would be involved in it, or that they would like to educate more on an issue. So, yes, I think that will increase communication between all of you and staff leadership more as well, even leading up to budget and, and new projects that would be involved in the budget.
As an example, you talk about, let's say there's 40 items. So, that, that list of 40 could come out to the council.
It will.
Yeah, and it, it would come out to the council, and then the council could review that. And Troy, if there's one that didn't make any sense to you, you could ask for some, long before we get into ranking them. You would have, I guess what I'm saying, you'd have some time to do some homework on that list and say, I don't really know what this one is, what department head can give me that information?
And even if a couple of years down the line, before that list even comes out, you may have already been contacted by staff leadership and said, hey, this is gonna be on the discretionary CIP list. I think you've been involved in a previous project like it, or this is the next step of that last project, would you support it? Those sorts of conversations.
Even if we had a project that wasn't on the list, we could bring it forward and, and could be discussed.
And I think when we say something doesn't get ranked or doesn't get picked up, doesn't mean it doesn't, it doesn't mean it gets lost, it ends up down. I mean, there's lots of things that, at one point in time, we thought might happen in a given year, didn't happen. And it might be two or three years later that it happened. It doesn't go away most of the time. It just didn't happen.
Postponed.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
All right, any other contributions to the discussion? And I would just simply ask all of our council members to go ahead and vote. We have a motion in a second. And our motion passes. Thank you, and thank you, Mrs. Vasicek, for your work on putting that together. All right, our third item, our next item on the agenda is to review the city council rules. And if you read through it, you'd see that there's been some changes in, in, in the city council rules. I, I'm not sure, Mayor, did you want to talk about this, or is this Mrs. Vasicek?
No, I, I think this is the time of year where you would bring up any potential changes. The one that I was going to bring as, and for discussion would be the time, the time of our council meetings. I think, not I think, I know in the email I originally sent to council, I was talking about 5:30, talked to a couple of council members that, you know, maybe 6 o'clock makes more sense, because it gets you, people, you know, it just would make more sense, especially like on an evening like tonight, where we had a committee, the whole meeting. Because then that would start probably at 5, council meeting at 6, and then we move forward. Usually, that hour is, is pretty comfortable. And recognize, I mean, for me, I, I mean, I've been involved in this for multiple years, and the 7 o'clock, it's, it's not a, it's not a deal killer. But for me, 6 would make more sense, but I, the thought process goes into staff as much as anything else. In that they can roll, and actually, when I was talking 5:30, that even made that roll easier. But I understand the reason to look at 6. So, my thought process was to go to 6, it makes it easier for staff. If you look at all the communities across the state, very few have a 7 o'clock. Most of them are much earlier, if not, you know, if not way earlier. So, it, it's just one of my, I, I brought it up a few years ago and, and couldn't get any traction. I think it does make some sense. And our, our council time is, is dictated by ordinance, if, if I'm right, or a resolution?
Yeah, so this would have to be changed in the rules, and then we'd also have to do a amendment to our city code, because we do list the time in our city code. So, there'd be ordinance and a resolution that would, that would essentially do this.
And the reason I bring that up is because the, the other committee that has that same situation is planning and zoning. And that committee, I polled that committee, and I, I received word back from, you know, I think all but two of the members, and they all were fine with a 6 o'clock start for them also. So, the, the two main, big committees that meet in the evenings, you know, that, that would change those. So, that's my thinking behind it. You know, again, it's not a personal thing, but I think it, I think it makes sense for, for us. If we happen to have, you know, multiple working councilmen, on the, council people on the, on the council, the 6 o'clock would give them time to, to change if they had to get home from work, so on and so forth, and still make things practical. So, that, that's my thinking, that's what I would ask.
Council members, any thoughts?
So, you would say 6 o'clock instead of the 5:30?
Yes, yes.
You know, that's really the biggest change in the rules that I can see, so.
I think there was a couple of things too, in regards to the number of votes for different items. That would be the.
Yeah, the other, the other changes come from me, because I don't think it's necessary to have to be voted, to be excused, to abstain, based on Roberts Rules of Order, so that was a suggestion I had made to the clerk's office.
And we have a vote of two-thirds of the council members present, present is required to suspend the council rules that require a council member to leave council chambers when abstaining from discussion and vote. That's the other thing that we're going to, that's what you were talking about, right, Mr. Valores?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, any other comments?
What, what, the Roberts Rules of Orders for abstent, abstention, how does that?
Except there's a, if there's a conflict, if you have a conflict, that's when you, you abstain. So, it's usually a financial conflict or, or a personal conflict. Roberts Rules say that nobody can be compelled to, to vote, but it's their duty to vote. And so, that's the, the differences in, in, in the, the documents. Also, there's the Nebraska Accountability and Disclosure Act that requires, in certain situations, the council or the mayor to disclose, you know, financial conflicts of interest. And so, there's, there's already obligations to do that, and I don't think it's necessary that the council member has to leave, 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 they just become a regular member of the public at that point.
Just can't participate.
Just can't participate in that discussion unless they go to the podium and, and discuss as a member of the public.
Makes sense. All right, do we have a motion to approve these changes, please?
Well, do you need the motion to include the new time, because that was not put into what you've been reading?
All right.
Instead of as percentage, just say as amended for meeting time at 6.
6:00 PM.
For starting.
And it'd be a recommend, recommendation to the councils as the whole, because this is committee of the whole.
All right, somebody wanna make that motion?
Some moved.
We have a motion in a second on amending the council rules, so that time will be, meetings will start at 6, and go ahead and cast your votes.
How long would the process be to, before that would change? Did it change at the end of the year?
Oh, you got three, you got, you got the three meetings, so we'd, we'd bring it forward next council meeting, and then it would be three.
So, the, the resolution, the, the council rules come up in July, your first meeting in July to approve. The ordinance can come up at the same time, it's up to the, the committee, or sorry, excuse me, the council to waive the three rules or, or to have it read. I'll have the ordinance ready to go at the same time as the, the resolution.
So, it'd be three council meetings, next.
If you don't choose to suspend the rules.
Correct. Oh, you can suspend the rule.
We could suspend the rules at that July, first meeting in July, and make it effective at any, we could read it once, twice, or three times.
So, the next meeting will still be at 7?
Correct. The next meeting, the first July meeting, will definitely still be at 7.
Very good.
Is there a preference on when, do you want to change it to 5:30, that second meeting in July?
Six. Six.
Six, six at that second meeting in July?
Be good to me. Make it the first of the month, be my only recommendation.
The first?
The first?
And that's August?
Meeting in August?
Okay.
All right, sounds good, we'll do that. So, we'll add that in our.
It'll be in the new.
Yeah.
We'll be in our new building?
Yes.
All right, so we are now voting with amendments to the amendments to the amendments, right? And our motion passes, thank you. All right, and our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your participation and your comments, and we will resume at 7:00 PM.